All right, we have one, Rebecca Liedem. If you could come forward to the microphone, please state your name, what the purpose of your visit is.
My name is Rebecca Liedem and I, the purpose of my speaking is class size.
You have three minutes, but I'm sure you'll be fine.
First, I would like to apologize for coming in during the workshop. I was under the impression that it would be similar to a regular board meeting. This is why I'm here to speak again. I would also like to clarify some things that may have been misunderstood last time. My name is Rebecca Liedem and I teach STEAM at Beach. As a specialist teacher at Beach, I have the opportunity to work with all classes in the building. For the record, the classes I have are the same numbers as they are in the classroom with their teacher because they come to specials as a whole group. As a certified teacher, I have the opportunity to observe the effect our class sizes are having on our students. When this is brought up, the first response always seems to be, well, your contract maximum is blank. A contract maximum is there to protect teachers in cases of large classes to provide more compensation to make up for it. The contract maximum is not there to be a goal or standard to how many teachers we should hire for the number of students we have. It should be the responsibility of the school board and upper administration to ensure that we are doing what is best for our students. The only time it should even be considered to make class sizes that high are if we are in a worst-case scenario and cannot find teachers to fill the positions, or if too many students are enrolled after the year has already begun. Our frustration is that our district plans on classes being that high simply because it is within the contract maximum. I would also like to clarify, I have never once stated that all our classes are too high in numbers. It is only within certain grade levels that we have this issue. Here are our numbers at Beach. I have only included students who have shown up. Kindergarten one, 21 students. Kindergarten two, 21 students. First grade one, 30 students. First grade two, 29 students. Second grade one, 21 students. Second grade two, 23 students. Second grade three, 19 students. Third grade one, 25 students. Third grade two, 24 students. Third and fourth grade split, 25 students. Fourth grade one, 26. Fourth grade two, 24. Before our teacher was taken from the third grade, those numbers were closer to 20. Fifth grade one, 31 students. Fifth grade two, 31 students. We were originally planning a third, fifth grade, which brought the classes closer to 20. Sixth grade one, 32 students. Sixth grade two, 28 students. Our district's youngest students are being harmed by the massive classes. With the growing number of students with higher needs, the growing number of behaviors, and the declining knowledge students are coming to school with, we now more than ever need the ability to differentiate our instruction and work with each student to get them where they need to be to succeed. This cannot be done when we are filling our classrooms to the brim. Not only is there not enough room in most of our classrooms, but there is not enough time in a day to meet the needs of 28 to 35 students with several IEPs, 504s, intense behaviors, declining mental health, and declining social intelligence. Please do not misunderstand what I am saying here. Our teachers are amazing and we love our students regardless of needs and will always do our best by them. However, even the best of teachers only have so much time in a day and space in a classroom. If we want our test scores to increase and our students to be reading by third grade, we must keep, sorry, keep class sizes at a manageable level. It is our duty and responsibility to do what is best for these students, but it is up to the board and upper admin to ensure that we are put in the best position to do so.
Thank you. Just, just so everyone in the room, most of you are aware that in a public meeting like this, we do not, the board does not respond because then you get into a back-and-forth, just so everyone knows. All right, I think that was the only call of the audience. All right, moving on to presentations. Letter A, easement at transportation building. Jason Witt, superintendent, and Miles Tomacitis, director of all things. I changed his title a little. Facilities and Operations. She's the queen of all things.
So we just wanted to share, highlight for the board. I sent this out a while ago to the board, the attachments. Looks like I sent it out on Thursday, September 25th. And wanted to let you know that, as the board's aware, we've been waiting on this for a while, but with the process of items awarded through the federal government, it does take some time. So the district was awarded five EV buses, and those buses are on their way. But that means we need the infrastructure in place to support those buses. And so, in order to facilitate that, we obviously need some charging stations installed. And those costs for the charging stations are also covered through the award that we received. But what's not covered is the fact that, in order to put that infrastructure in place, DTE needs an easement to make that happen. So, that's what's going to be brought forward later on. There's an action item later on on the agenda. And maybe Mr. Tomacitis could give up just a brief description of what's summarized here as far as where these stations are being placed and why the easement's needed.
Thank you, Mr. Witt. These, these charging stations are being placed on the east side of the parking lot, on the south side of the parking lot, just west of the building. So, parallel, running along the line with the building, backing up to one of our neighbor's fences there. The easement is in terms of the transformers that DTE needs to install. Obviously, with the new transformers there, they need the ability to access them, work on them, repair them, without having to worry about coming onto private property because even if you've had them come and trim your trees and they have an easement for the trees, they still go through that process. In all reality, right now, the one transformer we do have for the building is, there is not an easement for that one. How it got by all these years, I'm not exactly sure. But so the easements for that third transformer, the transformer that exists originally there. There's not a lot of work that needs to be done other than the running of the wiring, the installation, pads for the transformers, installation of the wiring. There's going to be some ground dug up, but it's right to the edge of the parking lot. They'll return the landscaping probably to better shape than it is right now when it is finished. And if and when something does happen, they will have that easement and will provide them, or they will provide a combo lock we can add to our lock at the gate so they can access the area. As Mr. Witt said, we're thinking permitting process is well along its way. They're just waiting on this easement now for it to be signed and turned back over to them. Construction would start in about three weeks from now. And, once we have the power source in place, it goes pretty quick. We hope to have the EV buses delivered December, early January, and train hopefully that first week or two in January and have them in action by beginning of the next semester, once we get the drivers trained on them. So, just looking forward for the approval of that action item so we can move this process along and take advantage of the opportunity to have these, these buses on hand.
Thank you. Are there any questions? I have one and you may, I think, I think I'm hearing this right. So, additional transformers so that the power that the buses are pulling, aren't pulling from the transformers in the neighborhood, that, so that...
These are standalone.
So that they're not causing a potential electrical drain.
That's correct.
Mr. Ososki.
Does it have any implications with the water that they're putting on the combined sewer overflow?
It should not swell away from that area. All that area is well west and south. There's no drainage that's coming through there from the plans and the conversations I've had with the contractor that's working on that area, on that big beautiful hole that we have. There's nothing...
The easement they want was, that was the township for developmental things that we've talked about ad nauseam, and that's not going to happen. Is there any conflict with that?
Any further discussion, questions? Thank you. All right. We'll move on to secondary-level course failures. RUHS and RUJH administration. Mr. Taylor and Ms. Sams.
I think that's the second one though.
Thank you. Is that what it is? Okay. All right, this is going to be our distribution of failure data from last school year, from first semester to second semester, as well as some other initiatives that we're putting into place as a result of this data. All right, so our seventh graders, as you can see, we had 121 first semester and 122 second semester. Social studies is our highest, perfectly transparent, that's our highest, seven, eight, and nine. So I will go into what we've done to address that. However, they had 28.9% failure rate first semester and then second semester was 26.4%. Science were much lower. It was 1.65% and then 4.1% second semester. Math was 7.3% and then 9.8%. English was 10%, sorry, 10.7% and 13.22%. All students that did not pass math or English were invited to summer school. So of those that were combined, six of those students came to summer school and passed summer school in their math and reading classes for summer school. Our social studies department will be now coached by Chris Norton for the 25-26 school year, which begins this week actually. He is a former social studies teacher, if I'm not mistaken, in the district.
That's correct.
Very strong content-wise, and so he will be meeting with them to discuss future opportunities and areas for opportunity and growth for those teachers to get those numbers down in a more manageable area as the rest of them are. Our reading enrichment has a new teacher in seventh grade last year. We didn't have the greatest classroom management for our reading enrichment classes, however, this new teacher has experience and excellent classroom management, so we're looking for, forward to continuing to grow that and make sure that our students are having the opportunity to grow their reading so that we can kind of obviously narrow some of those gaps. We will also be offering varsity tutoring in two of our sections, not just one. I have worked with varsity tutoring. Instead of one-on-one instruction, we're going to maximize our subscriptions and we're going to do group tutoring. We also think it'll help our kids participate more because it won't just be them with a one-on-one person. You know, in seventh grade, we only like to talk if our friends are there. So, they're going to be in more of a four-to-five ratio that the teachers will be dividing up based on current data. So we are looking forward to maximizing those subscriptions and using that program to its fullest, both in math and English. So in eighth grade, again, our social studies numbers are higher. We had 149 students first semester and 154 second semester. Social studies was 22.8 and then 28.6. Our science, again, goes down, 1.3 and then 9.7. Math is 12% and then it does jump second semester, however, that math teacher has been out on leave for the, I think he left, if I'm not mistaken, end of April, and he is still currently on leave. However, the benefit this going into the fall is we were able to create a solid plan. So we do have a solid everyday sub in there. So she is grading and doing everything that we need. We also have a co-teacher in two of those classes, so hopefully those numbers will stay more towards our first semester numbers as opposed to what they jumped to without having Mr. Thompson there last year. English is a 1 point, sorry, 1.34% and then 0%. And then, it's hard to, I should have said this in the seventh grade slide, it's kind of hard to look directly at math enrichment and reading enrichment because they only take it one semester, but we're doing the same format, they just switch. So seventh grade has ELA this semester and then next semester they'll move to math. So they're doing, we're doing the same thing in both of those classes with, by maximizing our varsity tutoring and our Math 180 programs. And we have veteran teachers now in both of those positions, which is going to be super helpful. Same support will go into that, that social studies department. And then we have two co-taught, oh, sorry, there are two co-taught classes per math and English and then two co-taught for science and social studies. So our special ed department is really working to maximize their amount of push-in services that they provide our students. Our ninth grade world history numbers were 28.4, we had 134 and 130 students. 28.4%, 27.7%. Of that, we got 10 full credits, so that's 20 because they're .5 each semester, back. So of that 38 and 36, we ended up with 20 full credits back. So if, if a student failed, you know, we already went over those numbers last, last time, however, we were able to get the most credits back in world history, which was great so that the kids can move on in 10th grade to the next subject area. In bio, we had 12.7% actually first and second semester. In algebra, we had 17.2 and then 26.9. Algebra second semester was specifically a lot harder in ninth grade. So Ms. Jarmelo and I have met and we are creating a plan and doing peer-to-peer tutoring as well as NHS tutoring, and that's already started. So we're looking to sort of strengthen those skills before we get to second semester because we realized there was a large drop-off and a gap in knowledge when they go into second semester. English was 17.2% and then went down to 12%. Again, you can see in the far column how many credits we did earn back, which was a significant number. We would like to cut down on the amount of kids that have to do it again in summer school. Obviously, that's always going to be our goal, but as you know, we got 55 of our 56 credits earned back, so those numbers do go down if you add those back in. We're doing Grit Team with, we're partnering with, I think, the 12th graders? Are they the Grit Team? Yes. So we're starting that, which will also be a program that our ninth graders participate in, starting this week. So we're very excited about that. It's going to be a specific group of kids that are identified as working with mentor students from the high school. And they will focus on a different sort of skill each week or each time that they meet. And they will be pulled out of class and meeting in the media center, kind of in a more flexible and get-to-know-you style of mentoring program that we're partnering with them. So we're really excited to see how that works for the kids. All right, what you don't see in the data are the two co-taught classes per subject area. Obviously, our teachers work really hard to build relationships with the kids. We have a ton of support for our students, so we have student council, Grit Team, Hope Squad, ninth grade ambassadors, Women of Tomorrow, YMCA Achievers, male mentoring community partnership where they come in from the outside of the community, and then Sound Mind and Sound Body. The tutoring opportunities have, has doubled this year for our kids, so we are doing after-school tutoring through NHS, peer-to-peer tutoring that starts this, or actually, it started last week, on-demand tutoring through varsity. Every one of our students will have a license for that, so we are going to look to maximize those opportunities. And then also our high-dosis tutoring, how we are going to use it as an opportunity to group our kids instead of using just the 20 one-on-ones, we're going to use them to group the students so that I can maximize the 20 tutors that I have and target more of our students. Our PBIS initiatives, I mean, as everybody in the room knows, attendance plays a huge role in our, in our failure rates because if you don't come to school, it's hard to pass. So we have a lot of PBIS attendance initiatives, monthly good attendance certificates, house points, because as you know, we're maximizing our RCA opportunities, and our PBIS awards. We've already got our month of September, all of our students receive their certificates. And Ms. Tiffany does an amazing job of supporting our students with their PBIS to have them going in the cafeteria and having, they got a special lunch treat the other day and got to play games in the cafeteria, which they really enjoyed. Yard signs and bumper stickers for all attendance achievers at that end of the school year. And then attendance matters postcards are mailed home as a personal touchpoint to every person that achieves, you know, good attendance. Oh, and then in their lockers, they have a reminder about when, with a magnet reminding them about how important attendance is. We have refocused our PLC meetings on, focused on student learning. So of course, we're always going to look at, our goal is going to be to obviously improve student achievement. Our whole school goal is to improve student engagement. We are diving into data, talking about pre- and post-assessments, which I know is also something Chris Norton is going to be working specifically on with our social studies department. We, him and I shared, he shared me his plan a couple weeks ago, very excited for them. But they will also be looking to analyze their learning and looking for areas of weakness so that we can start in seventh, eighth grade, and ninth grade, looking at trends and specifically targeting those deficit areas so that that way we can scaffold their learning and have the teachers working together from seventh, eighth, and ninth to help fill in those gaps prior to them getting to ninth grade. We are looking for, you know, obviously, action-oriented. This isn't going to be just a take-and-get PLC. We are looking for implementation, so we will be pushing into classrooms to making sure that our teachers are implementing the things that we are all, of all of our goals for seventh, eighth, and ninth grade. And then, to push our student engagement, here's our strategies that we're using, obviously our house system. And for those of you that don't know, we had house selections on Friday. It was super fun. The kids all got their t-shirts, they were super pumped. I got to see them in the cafeteria and we were all wearing our staff gear and the kids were so proud if they saw you and they were like, "Oh, my God, I'm in your house." Even a lady at Costco commented on my shirt and said, "Oh, you must be a teacher at Helbert because you're in my granddaughter's house." And I was like, "Well, I'm not, but that's really cool." So, apparently over at Costco in 96, you guys, we should all wear our gear because they really are also into it. And then I forgot I was wearing it, I was like, "Oh, yeah, I am." So she was really cute. And she like called the lady over just so that she could come see my gear, so I thought that was fun. So we're also looking to obviously continue our positive and caring environment. Interactive and hands-on learning is going to be very important, none of that, you know, old-style teaching where it's take-and-get. We want to make sure that our kids have the opportunity for self-discussion amongst their peers as well as, you know, hands-on learning, walking around the room, doing gallery walks, and just being a part of their learning. We're focusing on emotional intelligence and promoting positive reinforcement throughout the school. And then our outcomes, we're hoping obviously to have improved student behavior, increased confidence and motivation in our students, enhanced connection and community, and then development of critical thinking and self-directed learning. So basically, all of the portrait of a graduate characteristics, we're looking to strengthen with all of our initiatives this school year. That brings it. Any questions for me?
Through the chair.
Mrs. Martin.
What does the PLC stand for?
Professional Learning Community.
Okay. And then also, I wanted to go back to the math grade scores, the enrichment. What did you, you said it so fast, I'm so sorry.
I'm so sorry.
It just like, I didn't catch it. What did you say about the enrichment courses for seventh and eighth graders for math?
So our seventh graders, they do ELA enrichment first semester, and then they'll switch to math enrichment second semester. So the eighth graders this semester are taking math enrichment and then they'll switch to ELA enrichment the following semester, so it's almost like a swap.
And so, but last year, we didn't have, did we have math enrichment last year?
We did.
Okay. No, I was just asking because it wasn't, I saw like NA or like nothing there.
It's just they only take it one semester, so I don't have comparison data.
I see.
And I would be comparing grade levels, not across the grade. So it's like seventh and eighth, they're not the same kids, so I didn't want to put the seventh grade data in the second semester when it belongs in the first on there. Does that make sense? We're just not, okay, we're just not comparing the same kids, so...
Oh, I see.
Okay. So, one of the changes that we are making though is the tutoring portion. Last year, we only had varsity tutoring one section. It was sixth hour last year, and it was one-to-one tutoring. But to maximize our tutoring, we learned that we could, well, we learned this year that we could group our students and assign more kids. So if I have four or five kids that are, have the same learning goals to one tutor, I can, I can use other tutors and spread it out and maximize the amount of students that are getting the varsity tutoring.
That's what's going to be my follow-up question about the tutoring. Because I know we use the varsity and the, what's the high dosage? These are like two programs.
It's the, it's the same program. So all students will receive an on-demand tutoring subscription. It also has a ton of AI opportunities. It's all under the varsity umbrella. We specifically buy the on-demand high dos, I mean, so we buy the license for the whole, I think, upper, the whole district. And then we have high-doses tutoring, specific licenses for, and we use it during our, our enrichment, I'm sorry, our math and ELA enrichment classes, and that's where they get a one-to-one tutor. Whereas the on-demand, if I'm going to struggle in algebra, I can go in and schedule my own tutoring opportunity, 5 o'clock at night, in my own, in the comfort of my own home. Or I can do it during Panther time. There's different opportunities, but there, it's like à la carte. This one is Tuesday, Thursday for 40 minutes, and they get the same tutor each week, and they work on the same skills until they master them and then they move on. And it's all based on their current NWA scores, is how they're selected.
And the high dosage tutoring is only at the secondary campus.
Okay, gotcha. Thank you so much.
So, I was, I was looking at this earlier and I, I thought, do you think, is it a possibility that our social study scores are what they are because young people just don't really care about what Alexander Hamilton did, right? You know what I mean? Well, they might care about Alexander Hamilton because they've probably watched the musical, but it, like, they're just not, I feel like, I feel like young people don't care about the history of this, of the world, right? And, and so, is it some of that and we just have to find a different way to get them excited about social studies?
I don't disagree. It hurts my soul because I taught social studies for 12 years, but in the, in the same respect, I, I think if you ask the average kid what their favorite class is, it's not going to be social studies.
It's not social studies, yeah.
A lot of it is reading, you know?
And that was going to be my due...
It is a heavy reading class, which, you know, looking for opportunities to demonstrate mastery, maybe out, you know, and sharpen reading skills at the same time is obviously going to be difficult when reading scores in general are, you know, lower across the state. So looking for opportunities to demonstrate mastery without maybe as much textbook-heavy reading is kind of what the social studies department's going to look at with Chris Norton.
And then, my, my second question is, and I saw this quite a bit a couple of times also in our, in the presentation from the high school. When we, when we look at a permanent sub, so I know to substitute in the state of Michigan, you don't have to be a teacher, you just have to have a certain number of college credits and you can substitute teach it. Doesn't matter if your college credits are in basket weaving, as long as you have them, you can substitute teach. But in the case of a permanent sub, do we attempt to put someone who knows how to manage a classroom in there and maybe has some knowledge about the subject they're teaching?
Yes.
Okay. I figured we did, but I wanted to, you know, I know, absolutely. Because we all know, we also all know we're facing a teacher shortage, right? People aren't becoming teachers. And so, you know, retirees are subbing because their districts are begging them to come sub, right? And then they retire a second time. So I'd seen that, I'd seen that a couple places, and I was just like, I just want to make sure I understand what our permanent sub looks like.
We just have a, I think that it's, it depends on timing as well.
Yeah.
Last year's came in the spring and kind of came out of the blue. We were able to a little bit, you know, at the end of a school year, you have less opportunity. Teachers take vacation, you know, like there's different opportunities, and so we had to sort of piece together the end of the school year. However, this year, we could go into it on a stronger foot because we were able to program for it.
I was actually shocked. I have a young lady who works for me who has a... I have a young lady who works for me who has a college degree and is starting her substitute teaching because she can make more money than I can pay her. I asked her if she was doing any kind of orientation or classroom management training and she told me no. So today is her first day and they probably put her into a classroom not having any idea how to manage classroom. And I'm like, okay, just be you. Be amazing. She's really smart, so she'll be fine. But I was, I was shocked that the company, at least that she works for, isn't preparing her for going into a classroom at all. Okay, thank you. Any further questions? All right. We'll go on to Mr. Taylor. Support, emotional support.
Katie can take a breath now. All right. So I just, first and foremost, while Kim's getting me set up on page two, please, I'm going to go on record and say this is a meeting that I wish Mr. Bailey was here at because I know he's going to have a lot of questions and there's a lot of good information in here. So if he needs to meet with myself and Ms. Sims, they'll volunteer us both to answer his questions because they know, in all seriousness. He'll have a lot of good, a lot of good questions about this in all seriousness, so.
Yeah, absolutely.
All right. I'm going to roll through our cores real quick and then I'll give a little spiel at the end in reference to what our rates are looking like. So we broke it down by semester here. Obviously, just like the ninth grade at the junior high, it's all about credit base and graduation. That is our main focus. So math semester one, as you can see, are high areas of failures. There's geometry and algebra two, first semester. Last year, we had that permanent sub. And getting to your point, yes, we try to get somebody in there that's perhaps quote-unquote specialized in math, but at the end of the day, we have to get somebody in there. We did assign our department chair, Ms. Ball, to that. Go ahead.
I'm so sorry because first slide, I was trying to study at home. I was confused. So I just wanted to keep like going forward. Are you starting at 10th grade, Algebra I, or is this ninth grade?
10th, we're starting in 10th grade. High school's all 10th grade.
Okay. I was wondering, because I didn't know that sometimes they have algebra at the end.
Yeah, so junior high is seven, eight, nine. Yeah. And so everything you see on my slides is all high school classes.
So high school students are taking Algebra I if they.
If they had to repeat.
In the junior high or if they moved from another district.
Okay, that's.
So we do have some repeat sections in there for, for students that need to recoup that credit. All right. So as you can see, and as well as those numbers are going to reflect, in second semester, you're going to see an increase in failures with our financial algebra class, which as you remember, last year, we got into the project-based student engagement learning process. And that class was based all around projects. And so when I spoke with the teacher, Mr. Tom, he said probably 90% of those failures are either based on absences or the fact that we had students working three or four at a time in a group and maybe one or two students just refused to participate in their part of that project. And that's, participation is obviously going to be key. So, and Mr. Tom is a very, very fair teacher. And if they're failing his class, then there was an effort to fail that. So, but as you can see, we take our, as we do with every quarter, we take our accumulations of failures, we roll them into first semester, second semester, credit recovery courses for our students as well as summer schools and try to capture as many students as possible. Whatever students before they graduate are not captured within credit recovery or summer school, we do try to build that. Like Mrs. Knopman said, some of those classes are repeat classes that are built into our daily schedule to help those students out as well. So some of the contributing factors to our math, we had 54 students last year who were considered chronically absent by the state. Average math level as 10th graders, we're fifth grade math level according to PSA, T89. And then like I said, we have the permanent substitute for semester one. Getting into science, you're going to see the correlation with math with our chemistry grades. The major failures were for chemistry and then we had a little bump in physics, obviously. And those classes are a lot based around our math as well. Kind of the same situation, we had a teacher last year who came from a different district, from out of state, taught a lot of advanced classes. So we had to work with that teacher, getting to not necessarily the student's level, but a fair level where they can both meet at. So we changed some things up in there. And then second semester, you're going to see a little bit more of improvement as well in chemistry in those classes as well. But speaking with our science department, again, a lot of math in those classes. And to be honest with you, I know Mr. Witt hit on my academic performance in high school many moons ago, but when it came to math, especially with geometry, I failed my geometry class at Redford Union. Kathy Zavinsky failed me at Redford Union High School. And I will tell you, it is, it is, well, she gave me an E to be fair. It is, it was not Kathy Zavinsky's fault. She was a great math teacher. When I, when I looked at angles and I looked at formulas, as a 15, 16-year-old, my brain went in 360 different directions. It was not focused. And it's still the same for our kids here today, right? They see a math problem, they haven't been successful in math through 10th, 11th, 12th grade and they panic and their focus is elsewhere other than math. So I completely understand it. So moving on to ELA, you're going to see improved grades with ELA and social studies here in the next four slides. Obviously, the failures that stand out were the 10th graders. And then once they get into the 11th and 12th graders, our teachers are able to assess those students' needs with reading and comprehension and writing. And the grades, obviously, as you can see, improved drastically in both semesters one and two. And then moving into social studies, kind of talking about what you just hit on a few minutes ago. There's areas of that I certainly agree with, but I can tell you, our social studies teachers at the high school, and I'm just going to speak for the high school, obviously, because I'm there, they take a fun approach. There's a lot of engagement, there's a lot of fun. And I've got actually one of our rock star social studies teachers here, a long time, Mrs. Rosemary Johnson. She takes a different approach with our kids in her classes and getting them engaged and keeping them tuned in. So our social studies classes, as you can see, do a very good job of helping our students out. We look at second semester, US History 10, variety of reasons there. Obviously, like, we like to keep talking about attendance as being a factor and it 100% absolutely is. When you talk with our teachers, they cannot teach kids that are not present. And when the kids are missing 15 days, 20 days, 30 days, which is a reality in a lot of cases, you cannot teach those kids. And our teachers do a very good job of going back and teaching the skills and trying to get our kids retained with information for many, 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 many months. And they do a great job of it. But as we've sat here in this boardroom for many, many years, talking about we need to get our kids in school, we need the homes to help us do that. And if the homes need help, they need to let us know. So early college, so we have semester one, we have eight failures. Semester two, those are kids, those are high school classes that are not our college classes. They're not on-campus classes. They're college courses that are being taught here as well. So these failures that you see account, two students account for all those, for both semesters. So, and there's a variety of issues there with A being attendance and one actually had a disciplinary reason second semester. So we had to address that. But so even you see eight and 11 Es that were recorded, there are two students that account for those. And then as Mrs. Sims stated with our Grit team, we have attendance initiatives, getting kids to school. The Grit team at the high school and junior high is a team that's also working with our staff to monitor attendance and reward our kids for being attendance. What you don't see in the data, again, so at the high school, from even from ninth grade on to the 12th grade, it's all about credits. The goal is to get our kids, A, first and foremost graduated, but also get them basic skills so they can survive out in the real world, whether that's with social skills or with academic skills. And if they want to go to college, we try our best, our teachers try their best to get them prepared for college. Or if they want to go into career, you guys are going to learn more about that in the coming months here at a board workshop with our careers program. So when we look at that, again, it's from start to finish. So yes, we see a lot of failures in between the semesters, in between the ninth and the 12th grade years. But we do get them through credit recovery, we get them through summer school, we embed those credit recovery classes in our daily schedule. So at the end, what you see is an average of usually five to six, and it's been like this for about 15 years, five to six seniors that aren't graduating. And not all of those students have been with us between that ninth and 12th grade cohort. As you know, we're very transient, we get a lot of students in. So some of those six students, like last year, are students that came in from other districts that were way behind the eight ball in credits and we just could not get them caught up. So we had six students that did not graduate last year, six seniors. Three of them recouped and graduated through summer school. Three of them came back as fifth-year seniors this year and are on track to graduate from Redford Union. One in January and then the three in May, all three in May for sure, but one in January. And they're going to walk with us in May. So that's an overview of the high school.
I'm going to, I'm going to say, I, I, while I'm not a math person, I did the math. That's like a 97% graduation rate, just for the record, y'all. It's about that. It's somewhere around that, which is probably one of the highest graduations.
And the state has a different formula, but we're, Mr. Witt and I are working on that.
We can argue with the state, but when I see only six out of 162 students don't graduate on time, that, that's a much different picture than we had several years ago. I have a question about the early college. You said that represents two students. And I think everybody in this room who's gone to college probably failed at least one college class. Some of us failed more than one. I, I could be wrong. And I failed Algebra II and the only reason, well, I would have failed Algebra II, but my teacher didn't do that to me because it would have kept me from graduating from high school on time. But given that this is two students that are clearly not succeeding in this program, do we have that conversation around, with them, around removing them from a program that it is a privilege to be a part of?
Short answer is yes, one has been removed.
Okay.
For disciplinary reasons.
Thank you. Are there any further questions? All right.
I don't have any questions, but I just wanted to thank both Principal Taylor and Assistant Principal Sims for pulling together all this information.
A lot of numbers.
There's a lot here, so thank you for pulling all that information and putting it together. I, oh, I lied, I do have a question. I've heard it referenced a few times, Grit team, could you just give a little plug for the Grit team and how that's comprised?
So our Grit team is going to be, right, I forgot. I'm very loud, so it's okay. So our Grit team is going to be comprised of students that are identified by staff themselves, based on, they can put themselves in the program, but it also staff, as well as Mr. Armelo. There'll be students with a variety of different needs, whether it be academic, social, emotional. And they'll be paired with an older student on the high school side. And each time that they meet, they will have a different focus. So this is looking towards a mentorship that, you know, when kids pair themselves with someone that's older and gone through it, they can ask different questions, they can get different supports, just because it's a peer-to-peer opportunity. I do believe that, it's Ms. Holesman that's running it on your side? Am I correct? Yes. So Ms. Holesman, who is one of their math teachers, she will be running the Grit team on the high school side. And she is in charge of pairing the students and providing sort of that like agenda or skeletal topic for the, each time that the, the kids meet together. So I don't know what, if you want to add a little bit more?
This was the old Link Crew, if you remember the Link Crew, and they changed, and Ms. Adolfo was involved as well. But yeah, so they changed it to Grit, obviously, going after the Detroit Lions theme, so. So yeah. So I will just finish real quick with the high school and say that, you know, when I look at these numbers, let's be honest, they're not, they're too high. They're high. Let me, let's just have a real conversation about that. So we are, just like the junior high and the elementary schools, we're doing our PLCs as well. We're addressing that, we're breaking down data, we're assessing that and trying to close the learning gap. And I know when test scores come out and we see failure rates, the first thing we want to do is blame teachers. And I can tell you right now, that's not the case. Our teachers are trying, our teachers have a lot of initiatives in their tool belt and they're trying. And like I always tell the parents, we need you to meet us halfway. Meet our teachers halfway and our teachers are going to be there waiting for you. So, and the, the families that do that, they're not in this report. So we're, we're focused on those families that, you know, students are not performing well, maybe three or four classes. So, you know, they're not forgotten, we're going to work on them and focus on them and get them up to speed and get them graduated.
Through the chair.
Mrs. Martin?
Yeah, I just really want to say thank you for pulling this data together. It really gives a good insight onto, hey, what's going on? I'm with you on that. My colleague here, I wish he was here to hear these numbers because, you know, he's really been asking for this and hopefully he had a chance to review them. But yeah, I definitely wanted to say thank you because I think this is like my first, well, not comprehensive, seeing the numbers in this angle. And I say thank you.
Thank you. You're off the hot seat. All right. We will move on to elementary class sizes. Mr. Witt?
Well, I mean, we had kind of an impromptu presentation earlier today this evening on class sizes. But it's my understanding, based on the workshop that I was not in attendance at, that the class size issue was raised and it was noted in the minutes from that workshop. And so as of October 2nd, Mrs. Knopman pulled these numbers for both Beach Elementary and Hilbert Elementary. And I just wanted to provide them to you as an informational item.
Thank you. Yeah, go ahead. Go ahead, Mrs. Martin. I was just going to ask if there were questions.
You know, I think too, when we think about the budget and the test that we had to make, unfortunately, you know, I think this is where the area we see where we could have been greatly impacted. And you know, and I do think that, you know, it's not intentional. You know, we're trying to serve for something the best that we can.
Yeah, great.
And I just would like to comment that, and I think for people like myself and others in this room of a long history, we used to have incredibly high class sizes. And I would say that during Mr. Witt's tenure and probably toward the end of our shivers, we did a concerted effort to lower our elementary class sizes, which had been unheard of.
But, I mean, you are all aware of budget issues that took place and that many of your colleagues who are no longer here this year. And I know a comment was made that the only time you should raise class sizes is if you can't find a teacher. But the other time you have to do it is when you can't necessarily pay a teacher or afford to pay a teacher. So the district was very cognizant of recognizing everybody's contract obligations and making sure that we were able to honor all of the contract obligations with the increases this year. But the pot of money was only so big. So we had to make some very tough decisions and sometimes that comes with higher class sizes in some areas. So, but I would say in general, the district has done, has made a concerted effort. And as I look at these numbers and as a longtime principal, I would have been told when I was looking at these numbers to do something further, that there was still room under the contract, which is not what the goal was here. But the goal was to staff our buildings according to what our budget would allow for this school year.
No. You are allowed to speak again during public comment, if you so choose. Thank you for pulling these numbers together. I think I can echo what Mrs. Knopman said. My son is a K-12 Redford Union graduate. I don't think he ever had a class that was 19 kids, maybe when he got into advanced classes because there weren't as many as the kids as the advanced, but certainly not in elementary. Beach Elementary, second grade, third classroom, 19 kids. I, I want it to be, I don't think it's anybody's intention in this room to crowd children into a classroom because our contract allows us to do that. That is certainly not, I think I can safely say that it's not anybody's intention in this room. And I, I will, I will say, I don't do this often, I will say, the comment that we just are stuffing these kids in the classroom really bothered me because that's not the case. And until you have to sit at this table and make financial decisions that impact every single person in this room and every single student in this district, you have no idea how hard that is. And we all, I think we all bleed for these kids and for our staff and we, that's never our desire. And, and that's just my heart. That's just. And, and that's just my heart. That's just the heart of Mrs. Pridemore. Are there any further questions, comments regarding class sizes? Hearing none. We will move on to our student representative communication. Yay! It's his first time. What's happening at the high school?
So first, I'd like to start off with Student Council, because it's, it's homecoming week. This Friday's gonna be the game. Saturday's gonna be the dance. So Student Council has been very busy the past few weeks preparing for homecoming, dance theme, and spirit week. The dance theme is a night of mystery. Spirit week, we have Adam Sandler Day. Students dress as teachers, teachers dress as students. That'll be tomorrow, so.
That's tomorrow?
That's tomorrow.
I can't wait to see Mr. Taylor's outfit.
We've got your days wrong.
I do got my days wrong?
Because you were dressed like him today. He's being, he's being funny.
Wrong person today. But we'll see tomorrow how I dress up. We also have country and country club, so I'll be dressed up as a cowboy.
Country or country club. I kinda like it.
Next, we have Hope Squad. On Saturday, September twenty-seventh, thirty Hope Squad students attended the Out of the Darkness Suicide Prevention Walk at Belle Isle. Students walked about three point five miles with meaningful words written on a poster, showing their support to help prevent suicide. Also, this month, I believe, from what we talked about in the Hope Squad meeting today, that we'll start our peer-to-peer program at the high school. This partners our high school Hope Squad students with students with autism, creating mentorships and friendships. Next, we also have marching band. This past Saturday, the Reverend Union Marching Band competed for the first time in nine years since 2015 at the Southgate Anderson Marching Band Showcase. We had two goals: to surpass our last year's score of sixty-five point five and to take home a trophy. They surpassed both goals, scoring a seventy-three point nine and earning several awards, which includes second-place award in Class C, Best Color Guard in Class C, and the Jim Scuro Memorial, a Spirit the Corpse Award. This award is given to the group that showed the most pride throughout the entire day of competition, no matter what class they competed in. Then this past Friday, seniors met in the auditorium and found, found out that this year, our school organized a prom standoff. It will be held at Harp Plaza. And our prom will be held on Detroit Princess on the River Cruise.
Wow! Yay!
The excitement, the seniors, they were really excited. It sounded like Friday Night Football. Boom! It was crazy.
Wow! Wow! Man, my prom was like in my high school gym, so.
You can hear it talk every day. You can hear them talk every day. They're prepared.
I love it. I love it. Thank you. I saw, I had seen the, the marching band awards and gave some props to our band director. And I have also seen some of her, her, her student-teacher swap day outfits. You guys, you guys put Ms. Sami Edney through her, her paces with those student outfits, because she lets you guys tell her how to dress. So, and I love it, because she, you can tell she enjoys it and gets into it. And so I'm, I'm excited to see some pictures of this, this, specifically that day. But I think the country versus country, cowboy versus country club thing would be cool, too. So take lots of pictures and post them, please, Mr. Taylor. All right, moving on to Superintendent's Communications. Mr. Witt?
So the Staff Members of the Month for October 2025. We have, from McGowan School, Lisa Hildebrandt. From the high school, we have Katrina McKay. From the junior high school, we have Ed Barlow. From Hillbert Elementary School, we have Jill Birch. And from Beach Elementary School, we have Danielle Flincham. And from Keeler, somehow, some way, I get the parking spot for the month.
I'm sure they all love you over at the administration building, Mr. Witt.
Oh, I'm sure. I'm still trying to find out how I got nominated, but.
Somebody.
It wasn't, it wasn't Jackie. She's trying to figure that out, too.
Jackie, Jackie doesn't even know.
Moving along to the October 2025 Board Rag Book. Starting with Beach Elementary School, we had some photos from their kindergarten roundup. The Beach families were invited to attend the roundup event and help get our kindergarten students off on the right foot. So there's some pictures there from that event. They also had their annual back-to-school bash. So there's some photos there, and this is just one of the ways in which they try to engage their families and also make them aware of future parent engagement events that are opportunities throughout the school year. There's photos there from that event. And then there are some first day of school photos that were submitted as well. We're like basically one month in now. And there's some photos there of how they celebrated that opening day of school. And then moving on to Hillbert Elementary School. The junior high school talked a little earlier today about their house sort day that just took place on Friday. And I think the week before, or maybe two weeks before, September nineteenth, three assemblies were held at Hillbert Elementary to officially sort more than three hundred students into the four houses. And also, leading up to that, they actually had House Hype Week to kind of introduce any students that weren't aware about what the house system was and get them excited, especially those who were gonna go into the Al Torismo House. They were very excited, I'm sure, to be in the best house. And so it's also important to note that they have already started some of their competitions and activities, including an important initiative where they're doing a penny war that is not only designed to promote friendly, friendly competition between the houses, but to also support a Hillbert family that has some needs. So kudos to those efforts at Hillbert around the house system. Moving on to the high school. This was mentioned, but we wanna again highlight the junior high and high school Hope Squad, participating in this Out of Darkness Walk on Belle Isle. And noteworthy that that event raised over a hundred and ten thousand dollars to promote awareness and support those affected by suicide. And a big shout-out to Ms. Adolfo and Ms. Carlton for all their work with the Hope Squad, because I joined the SEL meeting, I had the opportunity to sit in on the SEL meeting the other day, and I just know that there's, we may be a small school number-wise, but I can tell you that this program's already making a huge difference in our school. And I know Lynn Adolfo mentioned that from, even though we just started the Hope Squad last year, I think there were more than sixty students that wanted to participate in the Hope Squad this year.
Wow. Wow.
So kudos to both those ladies for the work they're doing to set up our students with that program. And it is making a difference, and I can tell you that within Wayne County, we're highlighted all the time for our work in that program. And so kudos to all those involved with the Hope Squad. Also, we did wanna highlight the aforementioned Panthers Marching Band, along with the Color Guard and Majorettes. And there's some photos there from their participation in a recent football game on, against Robishod when we played them, and them showing off their new uniforms. The board approved that purchase some time ago. But as anyone that's familiar with those uniforms go, they do take some time to produce. So this is the first fall where they are proudly wearing their new uniforms. We also wanted to highlight some efforts. So this Friday is our homecoming game. We are partnering this Friday to have a local sports broadcasting organization. They're actually local, but they're, they broadcast games all across the state of Michigan. It's called the Prep. We use them previously to broadcast one of our girls' fight football games. We also used them last winter to broadcast on YouTube. They do a live broadcast, and then it remains there on demand. So they broadcast one of our, our senior night, boys' basketball game for that. And our homecoming game against Crestwood this Friday is gonna be part of that broadcast. But the, the head of the prep organization is actually a former college teammate of mine. And we've kick-started some conversation, knowing that we already have a group of students at our high school who are highly interested in broadcasting and sports broadcasting in particular, and all that goes around those broadcasts now that things are done digitally and done with streaming formats and things like that. And I'm still amazed that, I guess we've completely switched to, because my kids do it all the time, they would rather watch a movie on a screen like this than watch it on a large screen. But streaming is the way things are going. And we wanted to highlight that through a partnership with the prep that we're trying to work to build and grow towards a future. We're working with them directly to provide support to us, along with our teacher, working within that program to develop a fully operational broadcast media program. So the hope is that in the near future, we will be able to broadcast almost all of our home sporting events using a team of our students, who've been trained in the latest technology and trained by people who are doing it in the field. So that's an exciting program that we're just launching this fall and getting our students involved with. Moving on to the Veritas program, right here in this corridor at McGowan. We'd like to highlight our science teacher, Mrs. Perry. And we've heard previously about our forensic science class, but this time around, they'd like to highlight a lab that was done recently that involved the extracting of the DNA of a strawberry and a banana.
That's really cool.
And I did not know, before reading this, this afternoon, that there were strawberries have twenty-seven chromosomes and bananas have thirty-three chromosomes.
Who knew?
I didn't know, so Mrs. Perry wrote it for me.
You learn, learn something new every day, so there are some photos there of that.
That's really cool.
And we also wanted to highlight our day treatment program at the Keeler Center. They had their annual open house for their families on Wednesday, September tenth. So there's some photos there from them welcoming families to the Keeler Center. And they also wanted to highlight their annual PBIS kickoff. And that kicked off this year with the team-building scavenger hunt. So there's some information there on that. And that is this month's Board Rag Book presentation. Additionally, the calendar of events that will be posted is in front of you and has been provided to you for the months of October sixth through January fifth. And as we continue to have meetings, we'll get that information updated and posted online. And I was also, wanted to mention that, per a previous request, I know Jackie's been working diligently on cooperation with our athletics department to make sure that you guys are aware of the sporting events that are taking place within the district. And likewise, we'll highlight the fine arts events and things like that that are taking place throughout the year. With that in mind, there is a chunk or treat coming up. Probably two of them. So if you guys want to do a quick shout-out for your chunk or treat?
Mine is Thursday, October twenty-third at Hillbert Elementary, by thirty to seven thirty.
So Thursday, October twenty-third, for Hillbert Elementary.
Ours is next Friday, the seventeenth, at beach from six to eight. New movie on the lawn afterwards.
And Friday, October seventeenth, for Beach Elementary. The last item that I had this, the last item that I had this evening actually relates back to the Hope Squad. And there was an article that was provided in your board packets. So we just wanted to highlight that the previously mentioned Lynn Adolfo, if you look at about the middle of this article, she was interviewed about the impact of the Hope Squad program and was then featured with a little bit of, some quotes and things within this article that was provided. And I'm sure we'll find a place also where we can promote that, not only on our social media accounts, but also on the district website.
Awesome. Thank you, Mr. Witt. Moving on to communications received by the board secretary, that would be Mrs. Johnson, and she is not here tonight. Interim Chief Financial Officer's Communications, do you have an update from Maria?
None this evening. I think you, well, I will give a little bit of an update on this, in this area, I guess. We are still waiting on the exact details around the budget. There's talks that a budget has been reached, but I, I would just cautiously, I'm cautiously optimistic when it comes to this year. But I want to be careful to say that, don't believe every headline that you read when it comes to the school budget, because they're gonna be touting themselves as sending a lot of money schools ways. And that's truly not the case, based on the meetings I've been a part of since that budget came together. Our lobbyist said, and I try to follow these things as closely as possible over the years, but this definitely was the least transparent that the administration in the governor's office and both houses, which is a branch that's controlled by the Republicans and a branch that's controlled by the Democrats. It's honestly the least transparent that they were with what was gonna be included in the budget, that they reportedly had agreed on, that they reportedly agreed on multiple times and changed over multiple days and things like that. So I'm initially, I'm initially okay with some aspects of what's included in that budget, and we'll share this probably out either at a future workshop or a board meeting when we have more exact information. And I'll bring Maria to help us walk through some of that. And I'll bring, uh, Maria to help us, uh, walk through some of that. But while we may be okay with this coming, this current school year, some of the things they've done at the state level are creating an enormous hole in the state budget. And an enormous hole in the state budget is not good for entities that rely upon funding from the state level. Our lobbyist said that, based on what they've looked at initially, and again, they had to try to digest some things really quickly because they weren't given a lot of lead sign before, uh, they were given any details at all. And it was said that the hole for next year in our budget is over three hundred million. That's created by what they put piece together, and the following year, it's over seven hundred million. So, um, I know, I, I only bring that up so the board members realize, like, there's going to be a lot of headlines that say, oh, we're, our per pupil is going up and everything else. Some of that found increase in the foundation allowance, our per pupil funding, is being funded by the collapse of some categoricals that were provided previously. So there's a lot of, like, shell game stuff going on at the state level. And then they've been so focused on long-term fixes for the roads and what they want to do there that they're creating quite a dilemma for future budget years. And, um, I just wanted to share that. And again, we'll go over that in more detail once we have more details to provide.
Thank you. I know that I have spoken to the auditors. When do we expect a presentation from our auditors, next month or November? That, that is next month, isn't it?
I'm not sure, I'm still waiting to, I've had my conversations with them as well. I don't know if Maria will be ready to provide a presentation in November or December, but I will clarify that and get that to the board.
They're still working? Okay. Yeah, because, I mean, I spoke to them about a month ago. I just wondered where we were in the audit process. Absolutely, yeah, I, I had that conversation with the auditor. All right. Moving on to Executive Director of Human Relation, Human Relations, yeah, Human Resources and Labor Relations Communications, Mrs. Knackman.
I have nothing tonight.
Wow. All right. Executive Director of Curriculum and Technology Communications and all other things that we ask her to do, Kim Crenshaw.
So, um, I met with our, I'll cover, I have monthly meetings with our all-covered team. And I want to say it was August. They, um, kind of gave me a heads up when things are renewing and things that we're going to have to pay for. So they kind of had an idea that the renewal fee for the firewall that we installed three years ago, and you should all have your, my letter that I wrote to you all, um, my little memo thing that I wrote. So they were giving me a heads up that, uh, they were feeling like the renewal for the current firewall that we have was going to be pretty costly. So they were kind of doing some brainstorming to figure out what we could do to avoid those costs. So when they came back to me, this is kind of the proposal that they had. So to renew our firewall for one year is twenty-six thousand, three hundred and eighty-eight dollars. We would have to pay that every year until we replace that firewall. So that brings us to about eighty thousand dollars for, over the next three years, at least. So all covered said, hey, maybe we have some other options that are cheaper. And they put together a proposal to replace the firewall that we have altogether at a cost of forty-one thousand, eight hundred and ninety-five dollars, and it includes all three of those years of service. So saving us about half by just replacing the firewall that we have with a newer model that will provide us some more protection. I've been told it's a little bit easier to manage, it's a little bit easier to work with. As time goes on, obviously, technology changes and things kind of improve. So my recommendation at the November meeting will be that we move forward with replacing the firewall because I just don't feel like eighty thousand dollars is a good spend on a device that's, um, already three years old and, um, we'd have to probably replace in the next few years anyway, so. So that's my recommendation. You have all the documents that, uh, go along with that. I didn't want to have you approve it tonight because I wanted you to have time to look at it. And if you have any questions, you can ask those.
Through the chair. Mrs. Martin.
How much will be, will RISA pay for this new?
Yeah, they, so the previous firewall that we purchased was purchased with E-rate money, which is, uh, federal funding. We can only apply for that device every five years. So we've only had the device that we have for three, so we won't be able to apply for that again. But we're still paying less than what we paid for the first one that we had installed, for this new one. And, um, because I think for the first one, what'd I say that we paid? We paid forty-four thousand, four oh seven for the device that we have right now, out of our pocket, because they only cover eighty percent of the costs. So I don't even know if it's that high for this. Looks like it's only like fifty percent for, um, the firewall. Depending on the device you're buying is what E-rate will give you money back for. So typically, we would pay for the device and then they would reimburse us however much would be our cost. So, so we won't be able to apply for funding for this particular one. But in two years, I guess, we would be able to apply for it, but we'd also be out forty, another forty thousand dollars. Or fifty almost, actually, I guess. So, so either way, I think we're, we're better off just replacing it with the, the less expensive option. So if you have questions at all that come up after tonight and you are like, I need to know this now, please feel free to email me. Um, other than this, if anyone has any other questions about this?
Mrs. Martin.
I have a quick question. We're not paying for the easement stuff, though, right? With DCE, we're not paying for that.
No, they just can't go on our property without our permission.
No, I was just trying to go through.
My only other announcements are that we're in the middle of, actually, we're not in the middle of, we're almost done with NWEA testing. That window will be closing here within the next week, I hope. I'm taking a vacation. Uh, next Wednesday, I'm leaving, so I will not be here for the workshop. So my trusted coworkers will be able to manage all of this stuff for us. Look at how excited they all are. They can't wait.
I don't know about that.
So, um, but I will still be available by email if anyone, you know, still has a question or needs me for anything. I will be available to answer emails and calls when I'm not being magical at the kingdom of Disney. So that's all I have for tonight.
Thank you. All right. Executive Director of Student Services Communications, welcome to the table. She got a nameplate and everything, Mrs. Dillard.
Hey, what's your title? You got a new title on this?
Students.
She didn't get any title, we just, we just sit here.
She got promoted to the table.
Okay, okay, okay.
Some people might consider it a demotion.
I think we need to make room for Mr. Thomas Ayres at the table. He's like, uh-uh. All right, I'm sorry, Mrs. Dillard.
So not much tonight. I just wanted to let you know I attended the, um, PAC meeting, Parent Advisor Committee meeting on September eleventh at RISA at six-thirty in that evening. I don't see Ms. Chamillion, is she here? Okay. So our PAC parent, Ms. Chamillion, um, is not in attendance this evening, so we can further discuss that if we need to. But just a couple of updates from that group. It was the first meeting of the school year, so they've got a new board this year, which they're very excited about. They've got, um, everybody's new, president, vice president, everybody's new. So we will see how that goes. They talked about, um, podcasts that they're doing, which is really, really nice for parents. They're going to publish that on the RISA website under the Parent Advisor Committee tab. So that's pretty exciting. So they talked about, um, ADA compliance, they're going to, they've got a new newsletter. They've got Understanding Guardianship and Power of Attorney podcasts. They've got What to Expect from Essential Elements podcasts, a lot of different podcasts going on, so that's really great for parents. They've got a new Google Drive, which is really, really, really nice. They're going to send that link out and put that on the website. They talked about their mission statement and what that means for RISA and for that group and for parents. They talked about their meeting schedule, which I will be at every single one of them, this Thursday at six-thirty at my house. They talked about what RISA is and how PAC inspires RISA and vice versa. They talked about how PAC meetings are run. They talked about subcommittee meetings, their special recognition awards in April at six-thirty in the evening. They talked about their bylaws, um, their conferences. So a parent can go to a conference and they'll pay for six hundred dollars, um, for them to attend that conference, which is really, really nice. They got a new newsletter coming out. They have, um, let's see, they talked about Wayne Case membership. They talked about their treasury reports. Right now, they've got a balance of one thousand, eight hundred and eight dollars and forty cents that they can, um, play with if they need to. Um, new business cards coming up for their board. They talked about member reports and talked about public comments. So really, it was an informational-based meeting, there wasn't, there weren't decisions. It was just, um, four directors and parents who attended. So I will be there at every meeting. I will bring information back to you, and hopefully, our PAC parent will be there as well. The next meeting is this Thursday at six-thirty, which is virtual. Quick and easy.
So you can be comfy, thankfully. Thank you. Mrs. Martin, sorry, go ahead.
Did our parent, did our, our representative attend that meeting?
Okay, thank, thank you. All right. Moving on, um, future workshop topics, as you all can, I'm not going to read them because you all can read. But it looks like on, this month, we're doing early college and career tech update. And, oh, everybody's favorite, understanding the district budget. You know, um, we might need some ice cream for that night. It's like, or chocolate or something, I don't know. So as you can see, there's quite a, a bit going on, um, including some things that we have started the work on already. As always, if there's something you really want us to start to discuss, bring it to us, we'll add it to the list. At this point, I am going to call for a five-minute recess. My employees are blowing my phone up, which means there's something going on in my store. So we are on recess until, we'll say, seven oh five. I guess it'll be a ten-minute recess, sorry.
At one point, when we worked this as well, I meant to something to the people, so I'm going to act it. As I'm sure all of us do. I feel like she's not there yet.
You don't like come say hi or anything? Why don't you like sit over there? Why don't you like come say hi? Another meeting? Is it a fomer? Oh, that was you that texted him?
Yeah, I keep texting him from work. That way Miles has to stay. It's great seeing what's up about him.
This is a legacy that Miles has been at a meeting.
You can play pinheads. Did he get rid of all the rooms for the rest of the year? Why? Well, this is clear by the janitor's box.
Again, this tiny thing.
And it was? She said they got, they changed a lot of her letters for it there. We don't have Bailey there, he should have been done an hour ago.
No, we have way too much stuff to do, to be done.
These questions are killing us.
All right, all right, all right. Man, we emptied the room. All I had to do was call for recess and we emptied the room. All right. We have moved on to the consent agenda. Are there any items that we would like removed from the consent agenda? All right, hearing none. Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda items as presented? Moved by Mr. Osaski, seconded by Mrs. Martin. Is there any discussion? I have some discussions on, I have some questions on the check register, but I will address them in an email to you, Mr. Witt and, oh, CC, Maria.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. All right. Any further discussion? All in favor, say yes. Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to action items. Special consideration, non-consent agenda action items. Number one, easement at transportation building. Can I get a motion that the Board of Education, that's a recommendation of Jason Witt Superintendent and Miles Thomas Ayres?